Over the, over the, this evening we are pleased to present newly appointed board members, which we'll do shortly here, in the Fauquier Excellence in Education Foundation Board. This foundation had its origin in the Fauquier County Excellence in Education Committee, which for thirty years has provided grants to outstanding teachers to enable them to participate in conferences, seminars, workshops, and cultural programs around the world to further their professional development. Over the past several months, a planning committee comprised of parents, educators, and community representatives met to discuss forming an education foundation. With the concurrence of the existing Excellence in Education Committee members, the planning committee moved forward to lay the groundwork and select board members for a foundation whose purpose is to develop and fund programs which will enhance opportunities for all members of the school community. The new board members includes key founding members of the Excellence in Education Committee, and we would really like to honor these four outstanding individuals for their tireless work and support of education. Doug Larson has been a passionate supporter of our schools since his three children were students in the nineteen seventies and the nineteen eighties. Excellence in Education benefited from his influence and connections as well-known and as a well-known and highly respected community leader. So, and we have a small token of our appreciation, which is a letter opener and a pen engraved with FCPS 2014. Thank you. Wayne Eastum, a Fauquier County native and did go to Fauquier High School, and a father of two FHS graduates, also has a long history of support for public schools. As chair of the Excellence in Education for several years, he has assisted in fundraising activities and led the application and review and selection process for grant recipients. So, thank you, Wayne. And in every organization, there are a few people who keep the wheels turning behind the scenes. In Excellence in Education, the secretary, Meg Sheretz, and the treasurer, Joan Roach, both employees of the Fauquier Bank provided invaluable services. Included in Meg's many responsibilities as secretary are the maintenance of the list of donors, printing out hundreds of fundraising letters, and assisting at all the events. So, thank you, Meg. Treasurer Joan Roach is responsible for all aspects of the Excellence in Education finances and records, including, records include receipt and disbursement of funds and regular financial reports to the committee. So, thank you, Joan. Okay, so if the remaining members, the new members of the foundation board could come up front, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to give you each an opportunity to introduce yourself, what you do in the community, what you bring to this organization. And like I said when we were eating dinner, is this is recorded and it is amazing who watches these men. So, but we do need to have you on a microphone, so if, Dr. Jack, if you wanted to say a few words about the foundation, I'd be great.
Yeah, it'll be a very few words. I'm just delighted beyond words with the quality of these board and these board members. I mean, we're truly blessed with an outstanding education foundation board, and it's a lot of work, and a lot of work's been done up to this point in terms of organizing and painstaking process of selecting potential members. And I'm just, you know, I'm just thrilled and very appreciative of all your willingness to, to serve on these three times weekly meetings, which are gonna start tomorrow, so. But no, thank you in all seriousness for your willingness to serve. It means a lot to the kids of this school division, so thank you.
I'm Nancy Brittle, and I am a retired teacher. I grew up here in Fauquier County, and I went away, and then I came back to teach in nineteen eighty-two, and retired in two thousand and ten. And I've taught kindergarten through twelfth grade, so I feel like I know my kids. And as I was telling Dr. Jack, my experience in Fauquier County, because I did teach in some other, other areas before quote-unquote "I came back," was just such a positive one. My colleagues, my students were just the best. And Nina and Doug are two of my parents, so good to be working, good to be working with
I'm Stacy Griffin. I am a parent. I'm a, my son goes to Coleman Elementary School. I'm a stay-at-home mom, but I'm also a very active volunteer in our community. I'm a 4-H leader, master gardener with my focus in master gardening on learning in the schools with the Ready, Set, Grow program and super soil science. I'm also a school support council representative, representing Coleman Elementary, and I serve on their PTO. I am so thrilled to be a part of this foundation. I have always been an advocate for helping teachers and students, and there's just so many wonderful opportunities that this foundation has to grow our community and only benefit our, our children and our teachers, especially as it's a global world, so I look forward to it. Thank you.
My name is Tim Sargent, and I'm with Dominion Resources, which is the parent company for Dominion Virginia Power. I work in government and community relations, so it's my pleasure to come to Fauquier County many times a week and month. It is quite a joy and a privilege to be able to participate in this foundation. It is one of the joys of my job to be able to participate in organizations like this. And as a parent, whose two children are now in college and went through public school education, I appreciate and share your hopes and aspirations and expectations and vision for the future of education. Thank you very much.
My name is Pat Palasko-Barr, and I'm on my third retirement, I think. But my passion is child welfare, child and family services. And right now, I'm serving as president of the Mental Health Association of Fauquier County. And we've worked on a joint project with the Fauquier Public School System to really provide those kinds of needed services for the children here in this community. And I'd like to think of it as I have a vested interest. This is the only next generation we have, and we only get one shot at these youngsters. And I am so glad to be in partnership with so many people who are looking out for this next generation that we have coming, and I look forward to working really hard.
Hi, I'm Joan Roach. I currently work at the Fauquier Bank. I have been involved with the Excellence in Education since nineteen ninety. Plus, I had two kids that graduated from Liberty High School, so I am familiar with school system, and I just look forward to seeing what we can do.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Eastum. I'm the most local person standing up here. Grew up in Hume, Virginia, attended Hume Elementary School. From there to Marshall for one year. This high school had just opened at that time. That's twenty-eight years old, I guess I am now, is that right? Anyway, I feel that way most days after I get up and get going. This community has been so kind to me and my family. It's a pleasure to be able to give back. My two children both received a fabulous education here. My son is back in business here in Warrenton, in the building with me, not working for me. I'm with Car and Hyde Insurance. Our daughter Margie, who is a junior at UVA, is doing a semester in Switzerland, and she got a fabulous, fabulous education here. It is here, if parents will be involved, and if the children will work. Thank you.
I'm Doug Larson, and you've heard, I do have three children, all of them products of Fauquier Education, and, and I'm happy to say they've all done very well as a result of that fine education. I currently am with the Piedmont Environmental Council, although came to Warrenton forty years ago, really, to join the Airley Foundation and the George Washington University at the time. I do think, and having worked on this over the last few months with this committee and in the formation of the foundation, I do think it's an exciting time, and it seems to me that the stars have sort of aligned, and, and we have wonderful energy and momentum, both picking up from where, where we left off with the Excellence in Education Committee and building on that success. And, and I think with, with our superintendent very much engaged in this, we really have the opportunity to do something quite extraordinary in this community, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
I'm Meg Sheretz, and although I'm not as local as Wayne, I am born and bred Virginian, and happy to also note that my first job in Fauquier County was given to me by Doug Larson when he worked at Airley. So, like half of Fauquier County, I too worked at Airley. And he also steered me to my now job with the Fauquier Bank, which I've been with him for fifteen years. All of my kids and now my grandkids are being educated, as was I, in public schools, and I'm very proud of that fact, and they've all received excellent education. So, I am very pleased to be on this committee.
I'm Melanie Birch, and I've been here since ninety-nine, but I am a Virginian. And I have a senior and a freshman here at Fauquier High School, and a sixth grader at Marshall Middle. And I've been involved in the school support council and been a PTO president and board member for various schools for the last twelve years. I'm incredibly active in our community. I work with numerous organizations and foundations in terms of fundraising. I believe strongly in this organization, and it's been a passion of mine for the last two and a half years to see this come to fruition, and I'm extremely excited about our limitless possibilities. One of my frequent sayings is that this county is small enough that we can have, we can achieve anything if we all get together and put our minds to it, and I'm extremely excited to see what outcomes we have.
Hi, I'm Wes Kennedy. I'm here first and foremost as a parent. I've volunteered for my daughter Hazel's room dad duty since she was in pre-K, going on five years now. She's a third grader at Greenville, and my son will enter Greenville kindergarten next year, so I get to watch all my children go through rather than talk about where they're going to college now. So, very excited about joining the foundation and seeing how to make a chance. My day job is as a developer at Brookside and Vent Hill, so I'll be able to bring a new Baltimore focus and those two growing communities to the conversation as well.
Okay. Now, if you wanted to leave, you could do it, and we could let you guys go if you want to leave now, or if you want to stay for the remainder of this exciting meeting. But thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's right, you could watch it on TV.
No, that's great, that's great. Now, we do have a special presentation with Pam Pulver and Tim Sargent from Dominion.
We definitively have a history with Dominion Resources. Over the past couple of years, they have helped us tremendously in furthering our outdoor lab and getting it refurbished, so that we will hopefully be able to open it in the next couple of months. But one of the best parts of this is that Tim Sargent has been a good friend and helped me to realize what we could do with funds and how we could relegate them to the proper places to afford the students the best possible education they, they can. They helped us work on the grounds at the outdoor lab. They even sent their folks out to help us. They sent their folks out to put a roof on for us. They helped us with our starting of AP Environmental Science last year, and they're going to help us with some seed money for our Engineering is Elementary program that we're initiating in the elementary schools this, this year. So, this is Tim Sargent.
I mentioned before, this is one of the joys of my job. I enjoy very much being able to, to represent our foundation, our philanthropic foundation, and an army of volunteers at Dominion who have more skill sets in construction and other fields that provide volunteer skills, and someday they'll let me move up from just using the broom. That's all I'm qualified for among these folks. But I work in the energy business, so I can spot energy quite quickly, and you can see the energy and the vision and the passion with Pam in making this come to fruition and bringing the outdoor lab to life. It has been so much fun to see this happen and to work with Pam. She is a friend. We, we enjoy and appreciate what she's doing. So, with gratitude for participation, we gladly extend continued contribution for the outdoor lab and your efforts in Fauquier County schools.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. That's great. Okay, citizens' time. Community involvement is an important component of a successful school division, and the school board welcomes public input. Please be respectful and limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personal or personnel issues cannot be discussed. So, we actually have two people on our list today. Sally Murray, and if you could state your magisterial district, although everybody in the world knows it.
Sally Murray, Scott District. I have two issues to address. The first is, I'm sorry that the members of the foundation board did not stay, because I wanted to announce the Nancy Brittle's art show. Many years ago, Excellence in Education sent four of our art teachers to France to study Impressionism, and one of the, at the time, I was on the committee, and one of the requirements was that when you came back, you had to share what you learned with other teachers. Well, those four ladies just went overboard. They taught their own students what they had learned, and those students went on to teach younger students, and then they had an art show, so it was terrific. They called themselves the Painting Ladies. There are four of them, two are retired art teachers, and two are still teaching. Nancy Brittle, who's on the foundation board, is one of them. Currently, at Fauquier Hospital, if you have any time at all, on the second floor, above the bistro, along the walls, they have an exhibition, and the paintings also are for sale. And they're stunning, it's just terrific. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the Electoral Board on which I serve is once again running a student election page program in which high school students who are taking, seniors taking government, or, what's the other class? Well, US History and English, but the government also, there's a senior class that puts together all the social studies. Thank you, capstone. Or if you go to Mountain Vista Governor's School, no matter what class you're taking, or you're a member of the Student Council, or the National Honor Society, you do need to be between sixteen and eighteen. All the schools have the information. We're most anxious to have students sign up. We have retired teacher Ben McCartney working with us again. The applications go into him, and then we go through them and try to place students near their precincts. This is a tremendous help to the people at the precincts, but we also feel strongly that it also is a wonderful learning experience for students. They'll never, you know, be apprehensive about going to vote for the first time, so principals that are here, I encourage you to encourage your students to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
I'm from the Lee District. It is with mixed feelings that I address the board tonight. It was just a couple of months ago in July that I stood up and introduced myself as the current Fauquier Education Association president. I will now introduce the interim president, Ms. Liz Goodson, because I am leaving Fauquier Schools. So, I'm bidding you all farewell as an FEA member. I will still be a parent and a resident of Fauquier County, so I'm sure that, that our paths will meet again. But my last day is September the nineteenth, and I have to say that personally, it's a great, I am moving to Prince William County to work. It's a great career move. I'm taking a supervisor's job, and it's a significant salary increase. So, for me, it's wonderful news. But I would like for my final words as FEA president to the board to be perhaps some food for thought. Whereas Fauquier County probably could not have competed salary-wise for what Prince William is going to be paying me. Do keep in mind, as budget season comes up, that teachers have not had significant raises in quite some time, and unfortunately, we are losing teachers all the time because of salary issues. And until Fauquier can be more, more competitive, not that anyone expects Fauquier County to be able to pay the same as these very huge systems like Loudon and Prince William, but until Fauquier County can be more competitive, I'm afraid we're going to lose more and more talented and valuable teachers. And those are just words that I would like to leave you to think about in this new budget season coming up. I appreciate the ability to work with Dr. Jack. He's been wonderful the last few months, and I wish you all well, and like I said, I'll still be around as a parent and a resident, so thank you.
Well, good luck with your new career. Liz, did you want to speak or anything?
No, you're good.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Announcements. There will be a Personnel Committee meeting Thursday, September eleventh, at eight AM in the School Administration Conference Room. The Finance Committee for September has been canceled, so the next Finance Committee will be October thirteenth, five PM in the Fauquier High School library. The School Board Retreat will be this Saturday, September thirteenth, eight AM to three PM in the dining room at the Inn at Kelly's Ford. The Mountain Vista Governor's School Governing Board will meet Thursday, September eighteenth, at eight AM in the Warren County School Board Office. Chairman's Night is Monday, September twenty-second, at five PM in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a School Board Work Session Monday, September twenty-second, at six PM in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a Building Committee meeting Thursday, September twenty-fifth, at eight-thirty in the School Administration Conference Room, and there will be a Health Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, October first, eight AM at the Central Complex Building Conference Room. There will be a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, October first, at five-thirty in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room, and there will be a School Support Council meeting Wednesday, October fifth, at seven PM in the School Administration Conference Room. And I think finally, no, not yet, there will be a Personnel Committee meeting Thursday, October ninth, at eight AM in the School Administration Conference Room, and then the next School Board meeting will be Monday, October thirteenth, seven PM, right here. Okay, board reports. Mr. Gorg.
I have two things to report. Number one is the School Health Advisory Board subdivided itself even further into five specific committees. We meet once a month for an hour, and it was just not enough time to get through all of the activities we were doing. So, we are, I think we have a very engaged group this year, and we'll be doing a lot of sort of subcommittee work that kind of boils up and is going to come before this board in the, in position statements, papers, advisory comments, that sort of thing. The second thing, and I'm glad Ms. Hoover's in the room, because I spent most of last week at back-to-school nights, and while there's an amazing amount of just wonderful things happening in our schools, I was, had the pleasure of attending back-to-school night and going to French one class in our middle school. And they're using a program called AIM. I'm not, is that right, AIM? And after three weeks, no English in the classroom. Three weeks, no English in the classroom, or very little, I should have to say. But it's amazing what these children are achieving in such short time, and the earlier we capture them speaking these languages, the more likelihood, you know, the likelihood is that they're gonna be able to speak it more fluently. So, that was just, you know, amazing things going on. I just want to highlight that, that, that adoption of that was really fantastic, and I, I already see it in our, in our household, my daughter speaking French to me. I don't know what she's saying to me. It's scary, but.
It could be dangerous.
Yeah, exactly.
That's great. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Bland?
Madam Chair, in the Building Committee meeting, we had a lot of discussion centered around the renovation here at Fauquier High School and a number of larger projects that we have coming up. And Mr. Durrell later on this evening will share some of the projects that we're working on and the need to, to finance these projects here over the next several months.
Okay, that's it? Right? Ms. Grove?
Nothing else. Mr. Bland touched on the Building Committee, things that we're gonna be talking about a little later.
Okay. Ms. Riordan?
Just two things. One is, this Saturday, on the thirteenth, the Grace Miller Elementary School is going to be having their first inaugural 5K, and all of the money that they raise, of course, will go to Grace Miller Elementary, and it is what is known as a color run, and if you've never done one, they are a blast. It's a bunch of powdered color that is just shot out all throughout the run, and you get completely, with your white shirt, and you get completely covered in like thousands of different colors, and it's, it's so much fun. I would just encourage people to go and support them and have a good time on Saturday morning, and the information is on the school website at Grace Miller. And the other is, I wanted to thank a bunch of Fauquier High School, I mean, not Fauquier High School, Fauquier Public School employees who came out on Saturday, to, this past Saturday, to the Brookside Lake Party, and were kind enough to agree to be dunked in the dunking tank that we had at the, at the party. I was one of them, but we also had Paul Frye from Kettle Run High School, and we had a vice principal, I think, from Greenville Elementary. We had Stephen Cadillac, principal of Auburn Middle School, and the money that was raised went to Finley's Leap here in the county, which was a young girl that attended Highland School that tragically passed away this, this past year. So, I was in it, it was a lot of fun, but I thought it was great seeing everybody. The kids loved it. I told the kids that I was going to make them go to school all year round, and they lined up pretty well, with their dollars in hand to dunk me. So, but just thank you, it's just so nice to see everybody from the schools come out and support the community, so thanks.
That's great. I don't have anything. Dr. Jack?
I just wanted to mention the School Support Council we met last week. We talked about several things, including their initiative, our study of the later start times for high middle school. I recapped last year, and we also had a discussion about a career fair, a potential for the School Support Council sponsoring a career fair next spring, but we're gonna be talking about that again in October. Also, student advisory will be starting up again soon. You're all welcome to attend if you like. It's always very interesting. My wife was shopping in Haymarket, and the girl checking her out said, "Are you Jack, related to Dr. Jack?" And she said, "Yeah." And she said, "I'm on that group, advisory group that tells him what to do." So, I thought that was interesting, but, and all, and last but not least, please keep in mind the Excellence in Education Foundation Golf Tournament is set for September twenty-ninth at Stonewall Golf Course in Manassas at ten-thirty AM, if you're interested in playing or giving, or writing a check.
Or writing a check. Yeah, that's always good. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Financial management report. I know it's hard to take minutes and report at the same time.
Especially when this is the most interesting part.
Yeah, of course.
My budget humor. What you have before you is preliminary report as of June thirtieth. The, this is kind of where we stand, but it has not been audited. They're working on that now. But as you can see, I compared it to last year about the same time, and our revenues did exceed our expenditures, so that's always a good thing right there from the get-go. We ended up with about 1.3% of our budget remaining, so we spent almost ninety-nine percent of it. We did support food nutrition, so that they ended up... We did support food nutrition so that they ended up solvent and didn't touch into their fund balance. And as anticipated, we had funds left in textbook that carried over to pay for our science adoption this year. So we're in pretty good stead. I believe Thursday, the Finance Department will be closing, doing the soft close on the books for the year. Any questions?
No. Great.
Go write that down.
Go write that down. Okay, HR Department.
That's me.
That's you? Okay. And I just would like to say, our school board clerk is very, is sick tonight. Otherwise, we would have the overheads with the charts on it so you could see it. So we're kind of running a little without her. She's excellent person. So go ahead.
Just a brief report. There are six certified positions vacancies currently and five classified positions vacant at this time. That's not including school nutrition positions, which are, there are seven of those, and they're, they're kind of perpetual, so they're not included in that, in that number. But, and there were some, there were some fills recently, quite a few actually recently, but then also some vacancies. So they're moving forward with interviewing and hiring.
Yeah, this, this looks pretty good, actually. For this early. Okay, any other questions about that? Okay, great. Consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that the School Board approve the following. The minutes of the August 11th School Board meeting and the August 25th Special School Board meeting and work session, the monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, and religious exemptions 090814A and 090814B and 090814C.
Second. There's been a motion and a second that the School Board approve the minutes of the August 11th School Board meeting and the August 25th Special School Board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, and religious exemptions 090814A, B, and C. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, information items. Ms. Kotoff, the enrollment update. This is the exciting thing of the evening.
What you have before you is an analysis kind of showing where we stood for enrollment as of the day after Labor Day. That is a slight increase from the last report that we had of 82 students. And we are slightly behind where we were last year at this time of about 56 students. These projections are still within what we have for our ADM. So as far as state funding, which is based from the beginning of the year all the way through March 31st, there's, I don't see any need, I think we're going to be on target for what we budgeted. As far as our 10-year enrollment projections, they're based on September 30th, but if I were to put, plug in the September 2nd number, we are slightly behind where we had anticipated And you will notice when we look at the 10-year enrollment projections, they're slightly different for September 30th at the high school level because for enrollment, the 10-year enrollment projections, when we're looking at capacity, we don't include GED students. And so that's going to be your difference, just maybe a dozen students at the high school level. But if you notice that they're not exactly the same, it's because of the students.
Doesn't that make sense?
Yes, yes, sir.
The ADM number that we built the budget around, that was 11,000?
Yes, sir. It was 11,000. We'll continue as we typically do to gain students, but we do average almost exactly the same number of seniors graduating at the end of the first term, about 58 to 60. And so that tweaks it down a little bit, but in the end, I would say that we're right on target for ADM. I'm that good.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I'm really happy we're at that 11,000 number. That's always a big plus.
Humility.
Marcy, Marcy, Marcy.
Okay, all right. Mr. Durrell.
Good evening. We're bringing before you an information item related to the renovation of Falkir High School, and we're going to ask you to move this item forward to action this evening. We are asking the Board to authorize the Chairman to execute a change order with our contract with Whiting Turner Contracting Company for the renovation of Falkir High in the amount of a credit of $159,915. That is a price reduction. And the background of this is that for each phase of the contract, our contract allows that if the actual cost of doing the work is lower than Whiting Turner's estimated cost, then the difference, or the lower amount, is split with Whiting Turner retaining 25% and the school division getting a credit for 75%. For the Phase Two of the contract, which was the performing arts wing, Whiting Turner's costs were 209,000 some dollars less than what they had estimated, and our 3/4 share of that plus an adjustment is $159,915. So we're asking the Chairman to approve a change order with Whiting Turner for a credit of that amount.
Okay.
I don't think the Chairman, I don't think the Chairman's going to have a problem with that, right?
I'm going to be asking for money next.
No, that's great.
Are there any questions?
No.
I don't think anybody has any questions about that.
That one's good. Okay, roofing.
The next item we're bringing before you relates to the roofing here at Falkir High School. We have had in our asset replacement plan, replacing the roofs here at the high schools as well as our other schools periodically. Every year, we do some. And this year, we put out for bid three roofs. The new cafeteria, the old gymnasium, and the auditorium. All of these roofs are old. They have experienced leaks, which we've been repairing, and they need replacement now. We intend to replace them this fall. We bid those as one package, but with the prices broken out. And for two of the roofs, the auditorium and the old gymnasium, the low bidder was Georgetown Roofing Incorporated, and their combined price for those two roofs was $404,000. We checked their references for similar types of roofs, and they have performed satisfactorily. Therefore, we are asking the Board to approve a contract in that amount, the Chairman, asking the Board to authorize the chairperson to sign a contract in that amount. And this, this money is within our adjusted budget for capital improvements for this year. Are there any questions about that?
Nope.
Thank you. The next item is also a roof at Falkir High School with the same background that I just mentioned. The low bid for the new cafeteria roof was submitted by Reiko Roofing Company in the amount of $155,596. Reiko did, they installed the roofs for the renovation for the performing arts wing, and they performed satisfactorily. Therefore, we are asking the Board to authorize the Chairman to approve a contract with Reiko Roofing in the amount of $155,596. And this amount also is within our adjusted capital improvement budget for this fiscal year. Are there any questions?
And when were you going to do these things?
We want to do them this fall.
This fall? Okay.
Sorry, we want to move into action tonight so we can go ahead and get the contracts awarded.
With the weather. Okay.
I have one question about disruption to the school day. Is there going to be any disruption or movement?
There won't be any major disruption. There's always some adjustments, but the, and it's always, you know, problematic when you have to do a major project in an occupied school. But we have, as part of the bid, we showed the contractors what areas they could put their equipment and their materials in. We told them the hours that they could bring in heavier trucks or traffic. And generally speaking, during the school hours roughly from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., they really are not allowed to disrupt things. So in general, the school will function as normal, but there are always some adjustments that we have to work with the school staff on these. But we don't expect it to affect instruction or any scheduled school activities. But again, it's a good question. Safety and educational function are, of course, our top priorities. And, you know, working around an occupied building, you just have to make things work right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do we have, that, that, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I will move that the School Board move information items 11B, 11C, and 11D to action items 12A, 12B, and 12C for consideration for approval this evening.
Second.
There's been a motion and two seconds that the School Board move information items number 11B, C, and D to action items 12ABC for consideration for approval this evening. Any discussion?
I'll just say that we grilled Warren pretty good on all three of these. And so, we, at the Building Committee, so we feel pretty comfortable of saying yes to this.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
I was just going to say, that seems like a really good process you used about splitting out the bids. Just, I think we got a lot of value out of that.
Yep.
Great job.
And plus, both, both of these companies are reputable companies that we've dealt with before and have always had excellent references. So we feel real good about it.
Great job.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, now, do we have action items? Do we have any motions?
I motion that the School Board authorize the Chairman to execute a change order to the Falkir High School renovation Phase Two contract with Whiting Turner in the amount of a credit of $159,915.
Second. There's been a motion and a second that the School Board authorize the Chairman to execute a change order to the Falkir High School renovation Phase Two contract with Whiting Turner in the amount of a credit of $159,915. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Do we have another motion?
I, I move that the School Board authorize the Chairman to execute a contract with Georgetown Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $404,000 to replace the auditorium and old gymnasium roofs at Falkir High School.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the School Board authorize the Chairman to execute a contract with Georgetown Roofing, Inc. in the amount of $404,000 to replace the auditorium and old gym roofs at Falkir High School. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it.
And I will move that the School Board authorize the Chairman to execute a contract with Reiko Roofing Services Incorporated in the amount of $155,596 to replace the cafeteria roof at Falkir High School.
Second. There's been a motion and a second that the School Board authorize the Chairman to execute a contract with Reiko Roofing Services, Inc. in the amount of $155,596 to replace the cafeteria roof at Falkir High School. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, anything before we adjourn? All right, thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All right. We're...